I'm called to order the head top of region school committee business meeting for June 14th, 2022, our final meeting for the current school year. Uh, we'll call Wayne.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Emily.
Here.
Ree.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Chair is here, Ashley, Chris Redding.
Here.
And Dean Trump.
Here.
Um, very quickly before we get started, just for the membership, my new dean has already signed up to go to this. Um, the MASC in Mass doing conference. The school committee members is taking place in number two, five, Hyannis. If you are interested in going, the district covers the costs. Uh, just talk to Mary Ann for more details or let her know if you want to go by July 15th, right?
Yes.
July 15th. Uh, you can also obviously look at the website and get lots of details. Um, consent agenda. Any discussion?
Well, consent, definitely consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, give us one, Paul.
No.
No, give us one, yes. All those in favor, say. Uh, set of committee updates, finals.
Uh, we were just discussing when we're gonna meet again. We're up to date at this point and we'll be meeting again next month, make sure everybody gets better. So we're right where we should be.
Okay, can we teach you where any accountability?
You don't, we haven't met since our last, um, Mr. Potts will have a couple of items tonight that were on our last set of meetings, but.
Policy?
No.
Uh, communication, strategic planning?
Uh, it's on G for later on and we'll let, uh, Dr. Bartholomew let us in where we now stand and it's where it ought to be.
Thank you, and we've no couple of comments this evening. Uh, but superintendent move.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, just first, happy Flag Day to everybody. Those seventeen seventy-seven is when we first celebrated this and adopted the flag, so happy Flag Day. We're getting post building project update. Today was the last day of school, which means we have about one day and maybe a little bit more to get things moved out. And then by Monday for certain, uh, we no longer possess the middle school or the high school. We'll take them over and then we'll start the abatement. And then while I'm sure everyone is wanting to see a big explosion, like they do in Vegas, the building, it will all be torn apart from the inside first, it will be recycled at all. And then I'm sure it'll be like the back hole, everything comes, they'll start doing all the outside parts. Um, just as a timeframe, they said twelve weeks? I think twelve weeks.
Maximum twelve.
So maximum twelve weeks.
Inside?
Uh, for the entire thing. So we had to do the abatement first and then the demolition and removal, and that's twelve weeks. But obviously twelve weeks includes the junior. Everything will be abated and then they'll remove high school first and they have to get that removed before, um, they have to get that removed before students show up. And the reason why is because there's going to need to be pathways, temporary parking is still going to be where it is temporarily. Until the, everything, you know, everything gets leveled in front. They'll have to do whatever, um, the removal of shale or ledge, they call it. Once the ledge is gone, they bring out a new grade and that space where the high school is will mostly be parking lot. And that slated to be completely done by the end of November. And that's when the temporary parking lot will no longer be temporary and everything will be shifted to the new parking lot. So everything is on time. Everything is on within budget. And there is some, we heard some debate last night, a little bit about what you could possibly occupy it. We heard potentially July 31st and then we heard the architects say no at the end of August. Two very big differences of opinions there. Um, and just so you know, if it's the end of August, that severely changes what we're able to do in terms of getting the public to see things before, um, before very able to get settled in. And, and just because we don't have scientific volatility doesn't mean the classrooms won't be set up. People will be able to go and move things, they just can't, that cannot be the kind of place where you can't stay anymore. Like a random space if they drop off, but obviously hoping for early August, that would really, really help us with our plans of.
You could build the difference, split the difference.
Yeah, they split the difference, we can put these together.
Uh, just wondering if, uh, because we're not meeting, it's like the school committee is a office, it looks like, if you could send out occasional emails, just kind of updating us on that. Cause I know I was one who got a few things like, I heard this school's gonna be blown up on Wednesday. Pretty sure they're not blowing up, but pretty sure it's gonna be longer than that.
Well, not by us anyways, not only the kids that got banned.
Oh, the kids did their best today.
Oh, yeah, writing that wall.
Yeah.
Did they really?
Oh, yes.
They vandalized.
They vandalized, yes.
Seventy years of pent up frustration, we wanted to vandalize something, probably gonna change.
So, so, yeah, I, I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, just like an occasional.
We want it anyway. I think at one point we talked about doing the drone through the, through the building and we want to do that anyway. Um, and, and I know that our who can, uh, Dave Bertex definitely wants to give more information out, but that, that won't be a problem. There's any stags, which I think the biggest stags are, uh, except for the parking, for the building itself, for the building itself though, going to school, that should be.
Yeah, they're never putting up trees around the building, it's not like they're scrambling to get things like bathrooms and stuff, like they're actually landscaping it out, so. We're doing it over there.
So, and so after the building project, just as a, as a update, I told you about the test that's coming to an end, we're not being testing, will not be receiving tests. If the district wants to participate in testing, they'll have to purchase the test. Cannot imagine under the budgetary situation that that is something that Temple will be doing. Just wanted to know that, and members dropped out last week, so yes. Say again?
Oh, the tests. It's all testing.
Yeah.
No more tests. That, that, Mr. Potts, uh, field philosophy on grading here, no more tests across. Uh, no, yeah, just both tests. Great, thank you. Our graduation, graduation was fantastic weather, went really well. Um, it's just, it's always great to see the combination of some, it was three days, fourteen years in our school district. Um, and then just all that celebration, just outstanding, I heard. Senior celebration went extremely well, it was a lot of fun. A lot of affirming that. Uh, and Chris, I know, played part of that as well, so that's just a great time for the seniors. Also, we got a $25,000 accelerated math grant, uh, we'll be definitively using that, always good to get grants. And we had four, um, staff that completed their CAG school. That's part of the degree court trite in Kentucky collaborative, I mean, before it became official, was unofficial collaboration. So Lee Lentz, Kristen Niles, Keith Sherman, Ben Alard, all completed their CAGs, so congratulations to them. And the final piece, um, you know, I, I, some of you may have seen that, we, we put together a 10 minute video, I apologize if it's length, but. I wanted to spend some time just, um, thanking all of our retirees this year, so I'll just say them by name here, but up at Page School, uh, you have Ms. Howley, Pete Wood, now Bagged Out, it's Lizzy's Newsy, Karen Cronin. Out of the high school, it's Sue Kiernan, Bill Thomas, Julie Farrell, Mary Reed. From Sweetser School, right here, uh, Dave Mosses, we had a great conversation with him this morning. He's very nice and he, he's, he's retiring. Uh, and at the middle school, you have Jeanne Lambigan, Mary Beth Clark, who, her, her father, Walter Clark, taught there. My brothers both had him, older brothers both had him, but she's, she's continued the family tradition, in the same room. Yes, yeah. Uh, Julie Cross, who's been there for an extremely long time. But, and of course, Ms. Barton and, uh, I think Dave Mosses, so Ms. Barton is always entertaining, obviously. I think just a huge thank you to all of them. And that, Chairman, is the last. Oh. So you went. Oh, yeah, sorry, student, I think, no, we, yeah, and, and tomorrow at five o'clock, Girls Lacrosse is playing Weston at Weston. Kentucky's seed is ranked as fifth, um, the, the Weston is ranked fourth, and that's at five o'clock, so you wanna be there at four o'clock. Get your seats early, get the front row.
Wait, wait.
We're wearing green, wearing green, make sure you wear your green. Go Panthers. Thank you.
Um, our committee is a little bit, um, I'd like to order tonight, we're gonna enter, uh, into the executive session for our time, after which, we'll be returning to public session to do new business. So we'll be entering executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining qualification, community may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, our location position. Our public body, in which chairs, so declares, I need to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personality rights, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personality. Right now.
Summer.
Well, it's Wayne.
Yes.
Uh, Martin.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Ree.
Yes.
Julie.
Yeah.
Chairments. Yes. Chris.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Terms of concession. With new business. Uh, first set of new business, be the clerical contract, uh, does that have any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the clerical contract.
So I could. All those in favor? Uh, next up, we have superintendent's contract. Wayman has made that new contract, goes in review, um, based on that exception review, uh, let's discuss, we just couldn't get it. Correct superintendent, two, three, five percent for FY twenty six three, uh, discussion held up. I'll just say thank you for the paperwork. Good luck.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Uh, which brings us to the science curriculum. Subway. What's that, screen post?
It's gonna turn on.
Done? Yeah.
The light is shining in my eyes before.
It's good. All right. Uh, well, thank you all, um. There, thanks, all right, good one. Uh, so I have good day tonight, uh, this Pam and I, most of you know Pam, she is the science department chair, uh, for seven to twelve. Uh, Dr. Doherty could not make it tonight, she had an appointment. Uh, however, um, we came to you, we come to you tonight, much like we did when we presented the social studies curriculum review about a year ago. And this was a really, this was a large collaborative process that took the whole year, October through, uh, June. And a large team of folks that met, who are represented right up here, uh, from all different levels, all different buildings, and we met numerous times. Uh, and the result of all of that work is this 14 page document. But we may not going to scroll through, uh, when we're seeing that you have this document. This document becomes a public document, we put it on our, um, website, uh, and, and we share it with our families as well, because it outlines all of the work, information that's gathered, where we're going and what the plan is moving forward. Uh, what I do wanna do though, is simply use a, a few key slides to help show you what our process was and what it all looks like. So that's the, the science, technology and engineering curriculum review. Basically, every year through our curriculum review cycle, we're covering a content area. So science was up, we actually publicly wanted to do science a year ago, uh, but we figured we had enough of it on our plate at that time and, and we sort of pushed it off. And so objective review, this is, this would be the same pretty much no matter what it was we're doing. So we gather information and data, we develop a scope and a sequence, we identify high quality curriculum and aligned materials. We ensure curriculum is culturally responsive, we identify professional development plan to implement any changes, and we create a vision in this STE, science, technology, engineering. This is the vision statement that's created by that team and it's created through this whole process. I'm not gonna stand here and read this, everyone can read this. Um, but it is, you know, really about taking what research says, how we should be teaching and learning through science, uh, technology and engineering. And the summary of the process, and this, this is a year's worth of work of, of many different people. So we started our meetings in October, November and May. Uh, we actually had a member from the Department of Education join us, Cole Scola, to talk about, uh, how the department would like districts to evaluate effective quality, science, technology and engineering curriculum. Uh, it was a, actually really important session, uh, that I think we, we will use the department to help us with that in all of our curriculum reviews. We piloted many different curriculums. We had a lot of programs and tools that came to us, uh, that we tried. Um, and we took a lot of feedback and the teachers who were part of this were really excellent. Um, and then we began the development of our understanding by design curriculum maps. Uh, that's gonna take a little bit longer to do. So we do some surveys, these are just a snapshot, the full survey results are captured in that document. But it did, you know, give us a pretty good representation that the vast majority of our students enjoyed their science, uh, or technology class. And talked about what skills do you believe students need to most work on before leaving Kentucky? Uh, and certainly, uh, science came up as one of the, the highest rated ones that we needed to seek it on. And then curriculum resources, so we sort of evaluating where we are at and what we need to do. Uh, and when we look at it, we see we have some new current classes, so the high school biotechnology, engineering design, middle schools and science enrichment is coming. Uh, upcoming new classes, so we're adding an AP computer science principles class next year. And in the middle school, we're adding an engineering robotics class and we revised those new science enrichment classes. And the elementary school without horizontally aligned curriculum, we have some work to do, but we're gonna, we're gonna show you some of those things at the end. And in high school, middle school, uh, texts, some of the texts we had been using, Pam, are, how would you describe them?
They're really, really.
Yes.
They're over, over twenty years, especially the middle school tasks. And most of the high school ones, except for biology, biology, we just, but the middle.
And when we had funding, we went ahead and purchased the biology, AP biology prior to completing this renewed, Marshall, because that is our end test, tested subject. Uh, and, and we just could not wait, we'd be happy to.
So when you say no horizontal alignment element, is that district-wide, right, like?
Yeah, it really had been district-wide, and then I know the district about six, seven years ago had done work on science, technology and engineering. But it was work that was prior to the release of, it wasn't aligned to the new standards of reviews. So, um, when you looked at horizontal alignment and without oversight of it, without anchor materials and board resources, it falls apart.
So like everybody expected, you know?
Yeah. Uh, and then, so moving ahead from the plan, just to highlight our professional development, I, Pam, if you wanna talk about some of the things we're getting here, cause you're gonna have a busy summer.
Yes. So we are starting tomorrow on curriculum maps. We already have high school biology, high school physics, high school physics done, with the UBD design. But over the summer, we're gonna work on our science lectures at the high school level and the seventh and eighth grade curriculum maps to coincide with the new. Um, and then Mass Insight is the new AP.
We have 12 staff members, yes, 12 staff members going to week long, uh, we're calling it summer ring at Bridgewater, we're calling it.
So we're doing Mass Insight, AP training, and then Lisa Ward and I, who is a, another high school science teacher, which will be ocean, ocean side PD. We're running a professional development for elementary classroom teachers with the mystery science, which is a great resource. Everybody to talk about, we're going to talk about more things outside, but it aligns really well with the Massachusetts science standards for elementary school and work we have. I think we have six people sign up for it, all of Kentucky, people want to choose side, we're gonna get them in the areas, um, and just gonna do that in the end of the year. And then Lego Robotics, the engineering robotics class that is going to be for eighth graders. I just moved up a kid today from Mr. Cronin, uh, for Mrs. Ward is actually teaching a section of that with, and Mr. McDonald's teaching a section. And they are going to be, um, planning that with the summer spell for the eighth grade engineering robotics class. And then the robot training, actually, you sent me an email today, but I want you to see the new equipment, the high school's operation, and get to people.
Sorry, Seth.
So if you wanna talk about that, cause I didn't have internet to read that.
So we'll have different layers of, uh, to, to implement inspire science, uh, which actually is a program adoptions, committee needs to go to adopt that. Uh, but different layers of training, some of it in August and then some more in September. Um, and this is, uh, adoption of new curriculum. The only one up here that I, I think calls for committee go to approval is the first one, McGraw Hill Inspire, because it really is a programmatic adoption as opposed to just a tech replacement. Uh, so McGraw Hill Inspire, we're, we prioritize that grade six to eight, was really wanting to be their priority for us. Uh, and, and we dug in on that and tried a lot of different materials. And all science curriculums are built, six to eight, nothing is built seven to eight, but all of them, sixth grade, building it like it's in a museum. Which presents some challenges to us, uh, but we leave it plain to work around. The McGraw Hill Inspire, there, there's a kit over there for you. And this year, what it ends up, what we end up ordering is a six-year license. There are multiple consumable texts that will come every year, uh, so I'm happy to pass this around, those are teacher, um, there's some teacher guides over there, if you wanna take a look at it, pass it around. I can pass it this way. So, um, but after reviewing all of the, the materials for the middle school, this really sort of stood out as, as grade six to eight, and it's the one that was probably the, the best fit for us for lots of different uses. And, and we, those are outlined in, in the report of why that is our best fit. Uh, but we look forward to it and, and, you know, it's a, it's a electronic version as well. Um, a lot of great resources, but a lot of labs are built in as well, so it's a phenomenon-based, uh, learning in science with the opportunity to do lab-based work as well.
So we had a group of seventh graders, high level, inspire science, and they really, they liked the way they were set up, the vocabulary, the material, and the vocabulary was excellent. And they had their little mini labs that they could do, and then some of that other, other things, and also the hotline, it was really wonderful. And the students really liked it, cause they're listening to the charts. The other thing about six to eight, with the McGraw Hill, six grade science teachers, we had a committee who really, really were excited about, and you know, coordinating this, to have the PD with the seventh and eighth grade teachers instead of their, like, their elementary peers, because they want to be prepared for this.
Great question, so is the, uh, basically this gets, uh, there is four in six grade. Yep. They're moving PD, they're science teachers, they will do the most for the science. Yep. Uh, the other adoptions we plan to move forward with are a couple of texts, number one, to replace our chemistry text. So this is the chemistry, it's Pearson, Salva's, now, uh, you know, this could be a different company next week. Uh, but this is the text, uh, that we would seek to replace. The vast majority of our tenth graders take this, this would be used in both CP and honors level. Uh, I'm happy to send this around if you want, get a chance to look at that.
The thing about that one, just that, so their chemistry, high school chemistry teachers, um, piloted, they put up a lot of textbooks from different publishers, and so on and so forth. They really like this one because it can be used for CP and honors level, just because of the way that it's set up and the different questions and higher level questions that are in the end of the chapters, they really like that.
And the textbooks, which are really buying, as we've talked about before, you're buying the six-year E licenses, so. So as we do these curriculum cycles, we really wanna cover every curriculum area in a six-year cycle, because once we get back around, we're gonna be back up for, for another six-year E license. So we will have sets of hardcover books, kids will have electronic, uh, versions to use, both at home and in school.
Eric, remember last week's topic?
Yeah, well, I, this would be tough, like, some of these are tough to bring back and forth, for sure. Um, this is also a chemistry AP text, uh, so how many students weigh the roll in chemistry? Twenty, so typically one full section, every instance, right? Uh, this was necessary, this is actually not easy to purchase because it's a college textbook, and they generally don't sell them in sets, they sell them one type one, but we're able to work through the, the deal and be able to do it. But there certainly are, it does say AP edition, so it is one that is used by high school AP, after this is around, it's from maybe two headed. Yep.
Students planning to take AP chemistry in the air, don't need to buy the book.
No, they do not need to buy the book, we will have, we will have the book purchased for them, yep. Uh, the mystery science subscription, so at the end of the day, we looked at a few different packages and programs, amplified the one we looked at, that was astronomically expensive, uh, to implement. And what we decided we wanna do is commit to a two-year, pay-for-in mystery science two-year subscription. And it's not, they're, they have a whole program that is a complete science program, that is not necessarily what is often advertised and used by teachers. So we have a whole training module on how to use a complete science program. Commit to a two-year subscription, because at the end of the day, we have given our teachers a lot to learn and manage and ask them to implement a whole new science curriculum, we've got lots. This will be a lot too, but it's much more manageable, but it will help us follow the Massachusetts standards and begin to build out some consistency with students and the elementary schools. We don't, you know, if you're in kindergarten, first or second grade, you don't have an hour a day of science class. You, you have thirty to forty-five minutes, maybe every other day, or you do in two to three week cycles, you do two weeks of social studies and two weeks of science. Yes.
Um, are we gonna be providing the teachers with the materials kits that they offer us?
Yep, so it doesn't, there's not a lot of stuff they need that we don't already have, and what they need, they provide through their, their school loans. It's not a lot of stuff.
Okay, but they, they do have to know to buy that, so.
Yes, the school principals know, and, and it's, they have a list of things, I mean, most of it is, is home-based.
I totally understand, but it's, it's, it comes up often with classroom teachers, like, oh, yeah, we're gonna do science lessons and like, you can go figure out where and get all the straws and the twists and the.
So the fact that we as a district are paying for the subscription and doing all these other things, in the past, they could do that individually or by a grade level team, in the buildings. So all of that money comes out of the, the building, which you don't have to worry about, if they can use that to buy. Um, and the other one that we, well, the Lego Robotics we spoke about, uh, some really cool stuff, uh, and the kits have arrived, and we have some trainings for Lego Robotics in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, and the other one we have is a, is a physics book, but we're looking for probably a classroom set, um, for our physics classes. And probably a classroom text set, not necessarily the E licenses per se, but maybe they even E licenses with it, really, we just want to provide E licenses. Um, but to have a resource to use within the classroom for our physics classes. This was a recommended action, the plan, but warrants at year two potentially, but I think after the review of our, of our SRO plans, we're probably in a position to, to move ahead with this for next year for our physics. Which would end up rounding out almost all of our, with the bio we did, the AP bio, the regular bio, that would round out from sixth to 12 grade, almost all of the major science areas and content areas. And it gives us a good plan moving forward with the elementary schools, knowing we'll probably need to seek to, if, see how mystery science works, send it through streets, some. probably need to see to, see how Mystery Science works, send it through streets, and maybe we can be addressing it.
I'd ask you about the, can you tell us a little bit more about the Lego Robotics?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, you said you got some kits, but is it like, and the topics, one and there's some others?
Yep. This is straight from Lego, and they build these kits specifically for students anywhere from grades five to 10, and use different modules for which they can learn to do from them. And we've got multiple kits, and we've something we talked about, work for Mr. Conan, he wanted to make sure, and as we brought it forward, it seemed like if we work, trainers are local as well, and so they're going to come out and do some trainings for our staff to do it. And they have kids engineering, so they have a problem to design, and they have these for the kids. You know, it's not, the Lego, cannot buy this, these kits at the Lego store in the home mall, it's not what you can do. These are only commercially sold to schools, specific for engineering instruction. That would suck.
Quick back into the previous slide too, just very quickly, can you define an, is the new one for having grade six, seventh, eighth, or five, or the science enrichment?
Science enrichment classes. So in the, the way the, the middle school works, and each teacher sort of has five classes at the age, four of them generally are your core classes, and then their fifth section are either enrichment or lab classes, where they're, they're working even in small groups and larger groups, but those classes will cycle through every, every quarter, right, every quarter. So each science teacher will have a specific content area that they're going to focus on. So for instance, in seventh grade, it might be, let's say it's biology, right? And one science teacher will teach the biology unit, it's in addition to the regular grade level content, and it's more adapted, it's more project-based, and kids will cycle through that, and the other science teacher might teach something that has to do with physical science, and then they have that one class that they teach, and it's a cycle and group. They do set social studies, enrichment, and so forth.
So enrichment is basically lab or two.
Come on, Dad. Because they'll do labs in their general science class as well.
And then the focus of the, you know, so some of the areas that cross those, practice those, practice the craft, they tie it with that, looks like, some of the designs, those all the tests, and it's all, it's been a lot of data, you can look at the tab, the top six, so there are lots of data.
Low stakes, but high engagement and a report, and just adding to the content and the knowledge and skills.
I just want to thank you for all the work and all the teachers that did this, and I just want to say, as a parent in the district and having kids like, and haven't been at graduation, haven't been at the awards ceremony yesterday, I think it's very impressive the level of science classes and the variety of science and technology classes that are offered. You've heard kids getting computer engineering and forensics and sports med, and it was just a great variety, and I think it was very interesting, it was great. So thank you for all the work.
A lot of credit, as she's worked over the years, along with Seymour and Bill goes out of the high school, and we're sort of building it down, down into the middle school and elementary.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
So we do ask for, what can you motion for?
So it's not like we are still redoing this in two separate motions or?
I think there's only one motion probably for the McGraw Hill Inspire, so we're probably going to run this one, unless I'm wrong.
I will make a motion to approve McGraw Hill Inspire grade six to eight mass version curriculum. Second.
All those in favor?
Do you also need a motion to approve this?
That is it. That's the same.
Thank you again.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I have the end of math and literacy data.
That's me too. So we, and I actually have the next one too, the literacy, but we cannot.
And it's end of year.
End of year.
Not end of math.
Does it say end of math?
Something else.
Okay, okay.
It's a change of the same.
It's a same.
The end of, we breached the end of math.
No, math, it's a science.
So just, this is a very short slide deck, and this was in discussion with the superintendent, that we wanted to present to you our end of year benchmark data from the spring. We, sort of giving you some data reports in the past, which typically we do an end test one in the fall, and we talked about data before, but we do benchmarks three times a year, we do them in kindergarten through grade eight, and we do them in literacy and math. Math really starts in grade two, but literacy really goes kindergarten through grade eight. We hold data meetings that occur after each and with more detailed analysis for students in classes. What we're going to show you tonight is not students in classes, and really it's not even school level data, it is district-wide data, on a very broad sense, and get the bigger picture. And what we really do is we try to find measures that are quick enough to utilize, but are predictive assessments. So we want to know the students who are, we use these screenings for two reasons. Number one, who are the students who are on pace to be where they need to be at the end of the year? And if not, we need enough information from it to figure out how to support them. And then the second reason we do it is, how effective is our curriculum as a whole at moving the large groups of students, right? And that's, there's two ways to look at that big.
So, and if you keep in mind, like, these are both areas that we have to put breaking in the last four years, and when we moved in with I Ready, that was a big task in and on itself. If you're having to sit down and work to support teachers on what to do with all this information, and give them time to look at it, analyze it, and walk them through, and this is where certainly Grant spends a tremendous amount of time with teachers after the assessments, we're looking at it, and so too does Jen Holden, Rob Dorby, and it's, we go to these meetings. It's a great conversation, and sometimes it's an individual student, like a collective conversation, we're looking to support the student, when we need to adjust, but each, after each series of these assessments, conversations, now they know the basics, and they're becoming a little bit more advanced and more advanced, that only benefits the kids, which has been fabulous.
And so we have data that actually goes back to pre-pandemic. So here is a look at some of our literacy data that goes back to 18, 19. And of course, how it's represented here is in bar graphs, and you're missing the year, right? We're missing the 19, 20 year because we did not have spring data that year. But you can see the bars all the way to the left tend to be the 18, 19 year, and then the bright green represents this full year. So you can see, this is our kindergarten literacy data, and I won't talk about what each of these measures are, but they're predictive measures for specific skills that bleed up to an outcome we want for literacy. So you can see we're consistently doing better than we're, than where we were pre-pandemic. And then in first grade, some of the best gains we've seen, and some of these measures up over 80%, and a target of 80% is really important, that's where we want to be pretty consistently, from 80 to 90% of our students above, at, or above the benchmark.
Also, keep in mind, there was this big belief that pandemic was going to set everybody far behind.
Yep.
Not, so maybe that did, maybe these scores would be even better if pandemic didn't happen, but this, or our elementary students, not the case.
So our second grade here, you can see continued growth, some of our measures we had four years ago, some of them we did not, so that's why in some cases you only see two. Here's third grade, and you see our Lexile stores approaching that 90% mark, but pretty good continued growth. Fourth grade, we see fifth grade, sixth grade too, really making a lot of gains in a lot of different areas. This is another way to look at it, this is literacy and math together, and this is this two-year comparison, because we were all a little concerned about our performance last year across the state, in particular, the math performance. That is where we knew students had the greatest trouble. So what I show to you today is by grade level, this is across the entire district, when we take all kids from grades two to grade eight, on the I Ready assessment, the percentage of students who are at or above grade level, and the bright green represents this year versus last year. So pretty significant gains in both literacy and math. And then we break it down by grade level, and you can see in grade two, the mid jumps in math in comparison to last year, grade three, very consistent gains.
So we, we just see some of these numbers, just so much to say about this. A 4% increase is a staggeringly large increase. It's not like you would expect with so many students, you have six, you go from 60, maybe you go plus or minus one or two. But I think we just, we need to say in second grade it was a plus.
Yeah, that was massive.
Massive, or even, even here.
Six, seven, seven, four.
Plus seven. But, but understand, again, it's, as teachers become more familiar with curriculum, and then they're able to understand how data can be interpreted, how they can look at that and redevelop and deliver their curriculum, it hasn't.
That's not a math.
That makes, that makes, it makes a big difference, but so too do the school, the school councils, when they're creating the school's recruitment plans, and the administrators, when they're developing their goals, that's all included. So everyone is watching each, watching it and having discussions about data, because we, God, we trust everybody else bring data, right? So that's, that's kind of where we are.
So this is sixth grade, and then seventh grade, and then if we look at eighth grade, you know, these are students who had some difficulties in prior years, and the gains were massive. These were fun data meetings to be in Mr. Conan, weren't they? Where really, where the eighth grade students just really rose to the nation.
Mr. Markins has a question.
I'm just wondering what happened in fourth grade.
Yeah, you know, he is, it was the one grade across the entire, no, I was going to address it too, it's the one grade across the district that did not see those same gains, and it wasn't one school or anything. It was all three schools. And we.
Is it because it's a different, like?
Yeah, I mean, it's a different assessment, and, you know, we have a few different word theories.
If you, just, if you met Jen Holden, you can imagine that is chewing her up, almost trying to figure out why not her.
And in all honesty, our, our teachers as well, I think it chewed them up a little too. As we dig into it, we actually see the kids really still did make gains from where they started in the beginning of the year, just comparison to where it was last year. This is a different group of kids.
That was my question, are we talking about different cohorts?
Different cohorts.
Do you do any tracking cohorts?
So we do that as well, yep, and we just know that it's cohorts, all of a sudden it's a disagreement against the standard, right? So there's both ways to look at it, so we do that as well. And I'm actually, I'll show you a cohort.
What you can do with cohorts, you can look at the percentage of people needing or receiving each year, see where they're at, but when you look back at this eighth grade for that math, I can just, Mr. Conan's here, I'm not saying that, but one of the big shifts that he had made within his schedule, and this happened at one of our elementaries as well, is they took, he said to students, listen, you're struggling in math, you were, we're going to take you out of this class, we're going to double up your math skills, and when you meet the level of proficiency where you're supposed to be, hopefully you'll go back into that upper level. So that's what they did, it's a fundamental skill, it's, it's a building block, and the same thing for literacy. And I remember one of our early conversations, I think it was in November, when he showed me the scores, where the kids were, where they had gone, I'd never seen that before. As you are breaking and going through it, because we never took kids out and said, hey, we know you like being in this class, but you need to go out of this elective and into this right now, because this is going to take the president. And they moved in and out.
Was it that enrichment class that the kids had?
So it's during the same. Yeah, so it's a math lab, it's a math lab or the LA lab, and then the enrichment would be where the kids would be orientated. We tried to limit to 10 or less. Yeah, small groups, very data-driven, so the tensions are together because they have the same need, and we're focusing on that.
And at the elementary level, what we were seeing is during springtime, what I mean, that you had teachers on the same grade level saying, hey, what if we do some kids around, you take this group, I'll take this group, and we'll work on those skill sets. So it's, it's not able to get down to 10, but still, here we'll separate them out, and we'll do the enrichment at a level where we need, we need some of the fundamental skills. It's just definitive showing up on the schools.
And I think what Dr. Athol was describing is the level of, districts, all districts do screenings and assessments, the level of use of our data at the grand level, at the student level, at the small group level, I think we are doing that exceptionally well to target specific needs of students, and then you see the results. And when teachers see these results and we have data meetings at the end of the year, there's a lot of celebratory success. And, and there's still teachers, they could be at 93%, and go, well, how am I, you got to figure out, I can get to 70%. And that's just where their mindset is. And then one more data component I'd like to show you, and this is, this is a quantile measure, which we don't often talk about much, I'm going to blow this up a little bit. Let's see. And what you see here is, again, essentially four, it's three different calendar years, but it starts at grade two and goes to grade eight. And of course, we want the kids' quantile level to, to what? This is just a broad math performance. But you can also see from 2018, 19 school year, four years ago, before we started to implement a consistent math curriculum of this name is based, RECA, and before we started to use data to do some of these interventions, to now, four years later, even post-pandemic, when math performance was hit the hardest, the kids this past year continued to exceed all the other levels we had from four years ago. And in fact, that quantile level in eighth grade, it had never been over 1,000 on the average quantile score, and that exceeds what the, what the expected norm is. So our averages are, in almost all grades, exceeding the average. So really exciting data work, and you see the results. And then I'll, I'll offer this one slide as well. So as we prepare this, and I realize our lighting is terrible, we're too bad with the sun. So this is the DIBELS eight, which we use, the DIBELS stands for Diagnostic, Inventory, Basic Early Literacy Skills, this, and the eight version, so this has been around for about 30 years, the eight version is the one we've been using the last four years, last three years. We give a K to six, but in particular, we're part of the Massachusetts Early Grades Literacy Grant, so we had to submit the data to the state. And our K to three students in the 18, 19 school year, again, on the, what's called the composites, you take all those little subtests, they have a composite score, four years ago, only 68% of them were at or above grade level. And when I submitted it now, it was 80% four years later, and that is a massive change. And that is generally a goal, as you see, we've seen the literacy plan, is to have a minimum of 80% of our students at or above grade level. That means our curriculum and instruction is doing its job. It doesn't mean that we're not focusing on the other 20%, it just means our general curriculum instruction is doing its job, and we have supports of next grade and elementary. We were so thrilled when it, it was 79.7, I said it rounds out to 80, and he said, does it, and I go, it does. So. And this, just to show growth over time, despite the disruptions of COVID, our students are largely in well-passed performances where they were required to cope. And this is mainly due to four factors. There's a commitment and dedication of the staff to make this happen. A lot of this process were not things that they were used to, but they dedicated themselves to. Use of consistent and articulated high-quality curriculum that is current, ongoing use of data to monitor student performance and make adjustments if needed, and connected purposeful PD and coaching, having the people and the resources and the time. You have noticed, for those of you who have been there for years, we've committed a lot more time and money to resources for curriculum and the people to support that curriculum, and that's really important, and it's, it is pay off.
Yeah, I, so, there's just so many things to say about this, but the biggest piece is this is why we're here. It's about curriculum, it's about student performance, and having them receive a curriculum that gives them skill sets that are going to help them advance and understand complex situations, problems, all. And it has been, we were looking at these numbers, and one of the cases, we talked about the 80%, or 20%. or 20% that, or 20.3% that may not be there.
Wow.
So the 20%, but, but when you look at the school improvement plans, there are strategies, however you address it. So those students may not show up in that 80%, but their gains are just as significant, great gains. They're just not meeting or exceeding where they're supposed to be. They're meeting theirs individually, but they're not holding up. So it's, there is a very, very positive trend in that, that concern over the pandemic, it could all add for many reasons. That's also, we knew this at the end of last year, when we got, we were able to compare some data with another friendly district, that our students and our teachers did such a good job, it really mitigated, although it wasn't ideal by a long shot, mitigated what happened to you. Academic, not even social parts, a different story. This is.
Forgetting.
This is amazing. And I feel like there's a double sign for this. So it's great, and then what do you go from here? And what keep on pushing? And that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I feel like I can, for those of us who aren't in data, in data in general, I deep dive on a regular basis. I think it's hard for us sometimes to appreciate growth and improvement. We just don't look at habits. I think we spend a lot of time around people who do do it. This is, I get in giddy vibes, you know, which is a, so I, I think that's.
Us by bringing over 79.7.
It's extremely encouraging. Everybody should feel really good about one profession then. How much analysis do you guys do around subgroups? Stuff as well? I'm looking for, I am, just curious.
Yeah, we certainly do. I mean, we, we expect this to translate in MCAS performance too. We have correlational data. When I'm talking about predictive measures, that's what we're talking about, right? Mentally correlated to MCAS outcomes. So we do look at subgroups and, and we look at growth. Are there particular subgroups that are getting certain instruction? Whether it's on, how effective is that special instruction as well? So we spend a lot of time in that. We, we give, you know, even our data meetings at the middle school, talk about, you know, different classroom settings and the growth. And then Dr. Rethalme went to it as well. Even though some of those students might not be at the benchmark, as long as they're doing what we call catch-up growth. And that is if every student grows this much, but this student grows this much, there's still not where they need to be, but they get closer. So that catch-up growth is really a big part of it, and we examine why.
So when we talk about subgroups, we know, we look at, we get all the views. That's, we know where our areas are being. It tends to be, we struggle with special occasion schools that have seen increases that they're bringing in from peers. So when we look at that data, that's, yeah, that's come up on MCAS data and we look at the scores. But when we sit down and we have these conversations, we have, so all students have a goal, man, a stretch. And those students are getting these stretch goals, but still, doesn't put them there. But yeah, you might get this giddy vibe because even that 20.3% or 20%, they still, there's growth, there's big growth, which is fabulous. And the other important thing is, if you have students who are high performing, what you sometimes see is that they're expected to still have goals. And sometimes you see, based on the way the curriculum is being delivered, that there's this drop. There's, they're not increasing, but they're stagnant, or they dropped down. And that just, when we look at the color charts, it's not happening. It's just not happening.
That's, that's above.
I just wanted to, I mean, the portrait the teachers obviously have gotten is outstanding, and I wanted to reiterate that. But so as we come into another year where we're getting budgets and those kinds of things, the emphasis about the coaching and the support that that plays, I don't think can, should go unmentioned or unmentioned. Because there are other really high-performing districts who use these very same measures and who don't have those things in place, you know, that are not seeing the same sparks. So I think that that is a really important piece to giving the, you know, not just the analysis, but the, the support, the teachers and the students, and the teaching assistants who all play a role, same in all districts.
I just wanted to go back to the enrichment person. And I think it's fantastic that you were able to identify and pull out smaller groups and found a lot of success in doing that. I was wondering if that was going to maybe expand at the middle school level to writing or other subjects, maybe executive functioning or pretty much anything that could aid, no, like aid children, not just those two core subjects. Because if you have that much success, maybe it would be great. Especially, I think we've talked about our writing over. And then also, is there anything like that on the other end? Like, do kids have enrichment to have more challenging math problems or writing assignments? Or, or, you know, book study works and what will be a higher level of? Like a balance between?
Yeah, we've talked about, so ELA, for instance, having a focus on writing and a focus on reading based on your needs. So to do that, for sure. And to be more precise, the more precise we can be, the more students support it, the more effective it will be. Know that's a big leverage tool. And I think that's the point, so we call those lab classes, right? Because they go versus the original classes. We build out the content areas. And I think the hope is that those will provide those students who are looking for the opportunity to take something and really go far with it, that they have that opportunity to. It's a low-stakes environment. It's not a question of, I need to get an A, because that's not that play here. We have an opportunity to dive deep into some of the content and apply it the way they want to. When we have the opportunity to see civic projects, the kids are doing it in eighth grade to end the year, and wow, the depth and the personal connections and meaning for kids was so impressive because of that, right? You got to see something come out of something that you may not always get to see because it was a personalized learning opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the teachers, like to segment Emily said, it's impressive results. And with the pandemic coming, it's pretty awesome. I'll give you the point.
Your microphone on the map.
Either most required.
Don't think so, not for this, no. Just about.
So it's actually for item E, yeah, sorry, so item.
And the packet, it's listed at E and both.
Oh, and it's separated.
So this is just a discuss. So I, I agree with you. I just want to say, I know we just spent a lot of time on that. I'm glad, and it's super important, I think. It's always helpful to remember, everybody, that over the last two years, when there was a whole lot of this understanding and cooperation and stuff, and just getting through the dark day, people are doing a whole lot of work in addition to that stuff to actually keep, you know, critical thinking, that stuff moving forward. So I appreciate the time to show us what it's, it's even. So now we are on to literacy.
Sure. And I, I won't take too, too long. You have the document here, it's comes alive to you. This is the document, the literacy planning started in 2019, and it was interrupted by the pandemic. You see, you know, this is our, our, our cover page to it. We just finished it this year, but I'm bringing it to you as a committee to, to hopefully adopt as a district's literacy plan, which is really important. Jen Holden played a big role in sort of tying loose ends together this year and connecting it to some of the things we already had in place. And then these, these components here, these are these broad visuals. And I know it's hard to see up there with the, with the lighting and everything. But talks about, again, a literacy vision statement. And I, I will just read this so you can hear it, because I think this is important. Kentucky Regional School District will use a tiered system to skillfully implement high-quality curriculum to all students using evidence-based practices and leveraging valid and reliable assessments to inform our instruction and ensure all students become proficient readers and writers. And I, I won't go through this entire plan, but this, this was a combination of teams. We see multiple different teams. We had a planning team, a subcommittee team. So we had different groups. We worked with literacy, who helped us sort of put this template together. A lot of, a lot of the same things you saw from science, surveying staff, putting all that information together. But at the same time, we knew we had other things we had to get moving. We couldn't wait for a plan to be finished. So we kept doing that at the same time. And you see some goals here. And there's one right there, the top one says 80% meeting expectations annually. There we are, right? So we're already meeting one of those goals. And this outlines a lot, this will make it dizzy as we screen through it. But at the very end, as you get here, here are, here are three goals up here for this whole plan. And this goes out for about five years, so 2026, because doing this work takes incremental steps. And I offer this here for you, there are three goals here that, as the committee, as you think about your own committee goals moving ahead, maybe there's something there that you may want to consider that we adopt as a committee, that you adopt as a committee intention, or some form of it that allows us to utilize things we have in place and then focus on some academic achievements. And I think, you know, that's it. This has, I mean, outlines all the steps and everything. We certainly can come back and update you yearly on the progress of some of these things. And a lot of these have started well in advance of today.
Any comments to accept the case this literacy plan? Second.
All those videos. Awesome.
That brings us to F High School, Middle School Handbook. All right, Mr. Chairman, so last time we went over elementary handbooks. And this is consistent with policy CHCA, improving of handbooks and directives. Anytime there's a change in grades nine through 12, it's supposed to be nine through 12. The Mascherano Law 71, Section 378 requires that there is some publication of, of those handbooks. People are. And for us, that's typically the policy CHCA. So Mr. Opponent, Mr. Seymour are here. There was a link in your packet to the draft of this high school handbook. Had any questions for them? They are here to answer that, if there's any, is there anything you all want to talk about? I know formatting had been a problem, even if you were trying to get through quite a bit of different, 20 different years ago, for someone else to format.
That was the biggest challenge was, you know, every administrator the last 20 years had to have their hands on the same document. Transfer from Word, Word doc to Google doc. So it was formatting things, and it really took a long time to undo all the formatting and make it back and reformat it. Couple of the big changes we'll see, I talked about last meeting, I think it was before, regarding homework policy and the grading grant fee stuff. And she was talking about, you know, other than that, it's pretty similar to years past. Been updated at middle school level, hats and cell phones to complete that. Policy of the tab, just to work out the times, but other than that, it's very, very similar. It's the same as that one years past. It's broken up.
Any questions? Emily?
So I guess I'm curious with, so a lot of these things were similar when they were in, up then, in two different buildings. But the, being in school, that like, I know how application isn't the same. Like, I can have the same handbook as an elementary school across, across town, and it's not going to play out the same way because we have different administrators. And I'm curious, now that everyone's going to be under the same roof, even though it's two different schools, how, like what you guys have done or are doing to ensure consistency in the application of some of these things, particularly around the conduct and those things? Because I think that that's really important, and I, I know that that's hard to do.
Well, I think one comment would just be that the code of conduct sort of revised, I think, two years ago, and it's really identical. So it's been the same in both. And both of the, no, I, I just wanted to make that, you know, statement. So that was one thing that we thought a couple of years ago that, that did create the same essential. But there, there is leeway within each of those, sort of, you know, you look at an offense, and you look at potential consequences. And there is a leeway there in terms of, you know, it's not like it's, you do this, you have to have this consequence. So that allows for some discretion in terms of frequent offenders, disparity of defense, those kind of things. That's actually called out in the code of conduct as well. But this is work that, you know, Terry and I have to do as we get, you know, I mean, I think we work pretty closely together, but we're going to be working really closely together this summer and going forward. We've got the administrator coming on board. And so that's some of the work that we have this summer in terms of talking through that stuff. And one advantage we have is we're all right in the same office area. So as issues come up, we have the really ability, we're literally like right down the hall for each other to say, hey, we're working on this right now. And, you know, get, get either advice or consult with each other around like, how's the best way to handle this kind of thing? So that there is consistency. But I think there's also, there needs to be some differentiation as well. You might have a seventh grader doing something versus maybe a tenth grader, and that person at that point might have had that offense in four months. I think it needs to be handled.
I think that the handbook was written that way, that it was a danger of consequences that could happen. I think a lot of the work that we started at middle school this year, the high academic, I think we'll see a huge shift in the handbook next year, once we get some more of that work done. We talked about the academic, we're beginning to have high school as well. We have our behavioral, kind of matrix, and we have the expectation that we go to this space, this, that space. The next step of that is now that staff is on board with that. Now we come up with a behavioral fault chart, that's just, we do this, 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 this in the classroom, just making it more visual. That's more over the summer, maybe next year. Didn't get to it at middle school this year. I think that's what I'm very high school and work with it. So I think next year we'll see a shift in the way it looks, even a little more clear as we start to do it with staff and students starting to be able to.
It's concerning when things, I mean, and I get, my seventh grader might have different consequences, their first violation of this, but it is something that has come up in other places that I want to make sure that that's something for like getting at ahead of. Or it's, you know, my kid got, you know, this for their progress, good violation, and they, my kid has that three times, and they're not getting it. Like those are things that are.
Yeah, and we, even the middle school, it's kind of, we have a selling, as Seem said, if we have a seventh grader that's offering a seventh grade, and you have a senior degree to the eighth grade, you know, it's up the consequence event, you know, and kind of the age of hope really needs to play some place. A lot of people, like seventh grader, a lot of people, a lot of people, like eleventh grader, we're going to send this stuff. So it's all about mental. So I think that's why the handbook is written in a way that has the flexibility, sort of more severe things, zero days, especially when you go to tech or to three. So there's that leeway to, to implement age of hope.
Yeah, I'm just glad you guys are planning to like, sort of talk through some of that. Because I think that it's, you know, people are being hated against you, and that's not great.
Anybody want to make a motion? Make a motion to accept the handbook. How was your favorite? Thank you both very much. Thanks for hanging out, and you kept it for a while.
Good, good stuff to hear, thanks. Love your role. See you soon.
That brings us to G Strategic Plan Draft. Still want to take it? Sure. So on, on the strategic plan, we started this process back in the fall. I asked for a subcommittee, the first time we went through the business group, surveys, put together information, interviews, talked to stakeholders individually, got their information. And from that built a strategic plan. This time around, I asked for a subcommittee, that subcommittee met very frequently. Maybe just as frequently as. Yes, pretty, it was at least once a month. And there was homework and things like that that had to happen. There were surveys that got sent out, data that was collected. And based on that, we developed that strategic plan that's in your packet. Now, this is a draft. This is a draft strategic plan that you can look at. If you have questions, modifications, you can send those in, preferably new in the next month, so that if there's adjustments that need to be made, those adjustments will be done as an entire subcommittee. With the idea being, we come back in August, that this plan, you put front on the school in the forward book. And then once that vote with its approval, we're able to get that to all the building principals. So when they're meeting with their school councils, they can prioritize what has to happen. Some of these, when you look at the plan, there are some of these within the plan. Mr. Addison said this at the last meeting. We're not expecting that the school, all schools are going to hand, we were supposed to. We're not expecting that the school, all schools are going to hit, uh, we were supposed to try and get eight to 10, and there's a total of seven, thirteen, eighteen. So we're well beyond, um, going to school and saying, hey, you need to focus on all eighteen. Not doable, but some of them, they have to, they're not going to have a choice. We look, um, at objective one, protocols and procedures. Here's secondary, here's the high school. Every single one of them, you have to involve with your schools and all your stakeholders in that school. And I will mention, not so much. So there are going to be some that the schools themselves are going to have to, um, pick and choose. The owners are not going to have a choice on. When you click on each one of these, we, you should have the ability to comment on every single one of those. When you click on it, on, go to main, if you want to click on it, um, you have the ability to make comments. Columns. On the bottom part where it says Bagnell, Merrimack, Page, what we'll do this last time. It's not super clean, I'm trying to think of a different way to do it. But if that, those are action steps that are going to be selected. If that's the strategy and priority that, that Sweetser's going to, Sweetser's going to go on, and they'll have pieces here. But if Bagnell says, we're not going to do these, we're going to do these other eight, um, they may not be listed down there. So that's, that's what's on the bottom. So really the things to focus on for the district action items. You'll run into periodically, um, a box that's either empty or highlighted in yellow. There's a lot of information you can roll with it, and it wasn't when we met. There were some pieces just uncertain of what to put there. Um, so certainly have these thoughts you may have, or others who are there that agree. Those are always, I think they're always highlighted in yellow in the corner, certain. Uh, and then also, if there's something else that they should be adding, it's an action item, that will be certainly considered by the subcommittee. The genesis of all of this, we were looking at the priorities that came from the stakeholders, and we were looking, um, for the objectives. That was based on brainstorming and from the stakeholders, and how you categorize all those things that got brought up. And, I mean, we're, a lot of it was in the original one, which isn't surprising, these are pretty general categories. The important thing to remember when you're looking at this is, we are not looking at a granular level when we go to an action step for the district. It's, here's your objective, here's your priority, here's your action step in the district. And when the schools pick it up, it's more specific. And that's what we want to see in their school improvement plans, that they're aligning to, um, the district strategic.
So just very quickly, do you want to give everybody a rough order or a specific? Do they want to provide input for it to be useful to the subcommittee before you can turn it on?
Yes, yeah, so. I mean, I think a month would be above.
July?
Sure, or even July, if you looked at July 20, it's July 22nd. So if you can get to, by July 22nd, that'd be great, because that would give us two weeks, two and a half weeks before the first meeting in August, um, to meet, you know, there's something we can't meet. We might do it virtually, um, just have myself, Ashley, Reed, Maine, just to discuss everything about the strategies.
Thank you. Uh, school committee, I think the school committee meeting is scheduled for the upcoming school year, or the festival of 23th year. Motion to approve school committee meeting schedule for the 23rd year.
Second.
In the dispatch room, that's right. All is okay. Uh, final item, I, school committee, subcommittee assignments, um, all right, that is I. Pretty sure almost everything we're about to talk about, I've spoken to all of you, but I believe, um, except for one or two things. Um, thank you, everybody who sent me your preferences. I think everybody who sent me their preferences, um, for their first preferences, that was honored. Um, so that's great, I think that, that worked out. And thank you, especially being with Reed, to be conducted, uh, and develop a lot going on. So that's, that's always really good issue. Um, so with that said, um, policy, and this is one of the unresolved items. Uh, policy is going to be Dean Nitrata, Wayne Adams, Drew King. Um, Wayne's, you're rotating radio committees. I wanted to ask you if you wanted to chair this, because if you don't, there's a fantastic indie. But, uh, thank you, thank you very much, so that would be shared by me. Um, finance is going to be, uh, Chris Redding, the brochure, Wayne Adams. Uh, Chris Redding is going to chair finance, teaching learning accountability. It's going to be Emily Dwyer, who fills out the interview with King, chaired by Emily Dwyer. Uh, communications is going to be, um, myself, Ashley, Loffler, and my brochure. Ambush and Ramon, see if you'd like to chair that committee. Do you, do you leave that? Yes. Sure. Lana, and myself. And that is all I have. I think that was this to me currently. Um, really quickly, thank you to everybody for the year, um, that you've shared, you've done a lot of the work, and everybody who came and saw us over the year, presented, and took their time to make sure what you, you know, what we're talking about. Um, thank you. Uh, we've added another.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All is okay. Should I trade some?